We're going to call our regular city council agenda meeting into order. Today's Monday, February 19th, 2024, six o'clock city council meeting. We're a little bit behind. Work session ran over, so please apologize for that. Today, we'll start with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance to follow. Invocation is by Pastor Parsons from Redeemer Lutheran Church. Please stand. All right, I'm going to ask Councilman Boone to give our invocation.
That's correct. Dear Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for this time that you've bestowed so many blessings to, Lord. Thank you for the council that are up here, have us make all our decisions based on your will, Lord. Be with us as we go through it. Lead, God directs us in all that we do. In your heavenly name we pray.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
United States of America, in this republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Item number one is approval of the minutes for January 22nd, 2024, regular city council meeting. If I can get someone to-
I'll make a motion when we approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, item number two is a report from our mayor.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Councilman Martin. I just want to thank the city employees and all the organizations who put on Mardi Gras here in Fairhope. It was a great Mardi Gras season. I think we got through with little incident and just was a great time, was had by all. Mainly, I want to thank the employees. It's a busy time for them and really appreciate their effort in putting on this event for all of our visitors and residents. Also, I want to thank the library. Every year, y'all know, we host the South Alabama Public Power Association is here in Fairhope for the MOJ parade. And the library always graciously allows us to use the library for that event. So, thank you, Tamara. Thank you to your folks for doing that. We appreciate it. Paige and Ben, I know, we're glad to get that event behind them. So, it's always a good time, though. Also, this weekend, we have Arbor Day. You know, we can't just do one event here in Fairhope. We have to have multiple. So, we have Arbor Day this weekend, so we'll be doing a tree giveaway. And that is Saturday morning at 10:00 on the campus of Coastal Alabama Community College, right there by the Borum Building. So, please come and get a tree and also hear all the great businesses who've won beautification awards from Fairhope. We also, tomorrow, will dedicate our new track. Really excited about that. That is, of course, out at Founder's Park. It's a regulation track that will be used by the school, also by the general public. It will be open from 6:30 to 9:00 daily for the general public to use. There is rules out there for everybody about using the right kind of shoes, things that the do's and don'ts of using a track. So, really excited to add that to our menu of recreational opportunities here in Fairhope and just excited to be able to do that. Appreciate our partnership with the Ballin County Board of Education and Single Tax in making this possible. So, I think that's all I have today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay, public participation, agenda items five through 23. Agenda items eight and nine will not be on the agenda tonight. We will pull those items. Anybody? Public participation for agenda items five through 23. All right, seeing none. Council comments?
I have none tonight.
Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Check him, Jimmy.
I'm talking up here. I'll talk, I'll speak him up here, the agenda items.
Might have a fever, Boone. Don't worry about this guy. Councilman Conyers.
All right, just a couple of quick comments. Library Board met today while we were in work session, and they've got a couple of big items on the agenda tonight. The renovation project for the second floor, it's been a long time coming, be awarded a bid tonight, and also the reappointment of longtime Library Board member Dan Stankowski. So, several members of the Library Board are here, and if they're still here at the end of the meeting, that'll be great. But if they don't stick around that long, just wanted to point those two items out. They've done a great job. I appreciate y'all's service.
All right, very good. Councilman Boone?
Yeah, I'd like to wish my daughter Brittany a happy birthday today. Thirty-six years ago, she was enlightening my life.
All right, happy birthday, Ms. Brittany. Yep. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Well, I'm going to piggyback off the mayor. I, you know, Fairhope has come a long way as far as Mardi Gras and the things that we do now and the work that the staff puts in. A lot of people really don't understand the time and the hours and all the things that they dedicate to, to make it such an event and such a success for our citizens and constituents. So, I'm just going to publicly say thank you to our staff and the mayor and everybody, Paige and Ben and all the electrical and public works and everybody involved that puts such a show on for us and Mardi Gras and Donnie with the safety and all of those things. So, touche and thank you sincerely, guys, for the work that you guys do. All right. Agenda item number five is an ordinance. I would have to have someone introduce that ordinance for me, please.
I'll introduce it.
All right, thank you. Ordinance, an ordinance to require annexation for property outside the city limits but contiguous to the city limits for new connection to the city of Fairhope Water System. All right, guys. This is something that came across as far as our utilities is concerned, as far as people actually paying into our system. I think we actually missed this one in the work session with all we had going on. So, we'll talk about it a little bit now. What this ordinance is about is people that are contiguous that want to have water would have to annex into our corporate limits. And those are only for contiguous opportunities. Council, do y'all have anything that you want to say about this particular ordinance? All right.
I would say that we were, you know, we've talked about this in a work session. This has been-
Yeah, we've talked about it. Couple of months ago.
Four to six, eight weeks ago at length, and I didn't know if it was the mayor or if, you know, if Hunter or somebody else wanted to comment on some of those highlights on that.
Yes.
Since it's being introduced.
Yeah, this is something that we've talked about, you know, as far as, you know, the monies and as far as our customers are concerned with the business of utilities that we run. We just thought that we were losing a lot as far as revenue going forward with the things that we have on our plate, as far as the burdening on our system. So, this is where this ordinance birthed from, and hopefully, we'll continue to move in the right direction in things like this moving forward, business-wise.
Councilman Martin, if you don't mind. One thing about this ordinance is I think, you know, we had an extraterritorial jurisdiction for a while. And again, that had to do with planning, and we have our utilities, which is separate. When SB 107, our Act 297, was put in place, it really created a situation where there were a lot, because they don't have to, they're not in our ETJ anymore, they don't follow our planning rules and regulations, they might, you know, choose to build in Ballin County. It kind of brought to light the fact that, you know, we're providing a utility, but they're also building in the county and not building in the city. So, this is an effort for us to be able to pull those folks into our city, make sure they're following our rules and regulations, make sure our community continues to grow the way we want it to grow, and using the water connection is one of those ways that we can do that. This happens in other parts of, you know, Alabama. I think if you talk to developers, they see this in other, even in other parts of the country. So, again, this is only if you're contiguous to the city limits and you want a connection to our water system that you would have to annex in.
Very good. Okay, guys, we'll let this lay over. If there's no other comments from the council, we'll let this lay over for a couple of weeks. Okay, agenda item number six, some other ordinance, if I can get somebody to introduce it.
Introduce ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Conyers. This is an ordinance to establish water and wastewater rates for all customers of the city of Fairhope Water and Wastewater System and repeal and replace ordinance number 1759. All right.
Councilman Martin, I can speak to this a little bit.
Okay.
You know, let me first of all say that a couple of things, you know, I went on the news last week a couple of times and talked about this, and, you know, people are critical because I was speaking to this and that they didn't want to pay higher rates. And I think that the premise for getting in front of this and bringing this up, you know, a couple of weeks ago, was for transparency. It wasn't that I wanted to be a cheerleader for higher rates. That's the last thing I wanted to do. I don't think that anybody up here ever wants to increase rates for everything. It's not in a politician's nature to want to raise expenses because, you know, you're going to get criticized for that. So, first of all, I think that was in the spirit of transparency that we talked about this at the last council meeting. And then, the news picked up on that and then shy away from it. We just tried to be open and say, this is what we're looking at doing. The second thing is, is that there's a misconception that because we have explosive growth in this city, we need to raise rates. That's not why we're raising rates. We're raising rates because we hadn't raised rates in several years. And just like your cable bill and your cell phone bill and every other bill that you pay, whatever that service is, you know, they're having, the people that are providing that have to pay their employees more, the cost of materials go up. This is just a normal course of business. This is not because the growth of the city has been mismanaged. It's to just, we don't want to, the worst thing that we could do would be to fall further behind and not do the responsible thing and to try to keep up with what our expenses are. We can't lose money and provide services to the people. So, that's all this is about, you know. And so, these are some modest raises. I'll go through some of them. On the base rates for residential in the city, we propose to go from $12.03 to $14.01, or $1.97 cents, this per month. The per 1,000 gallons rate would go from $2.39 to $2.60, or 21 cents a month, or 21 cents per 1,000 gallons per month. And the average usage, if you're wondering, is about 5,000 gallons per month. And for residential use outside the city, so similar, $2.02. We were just trying to round these numbers off a little bit and get some prettier numbers. So, $1.97 to $2.02 on that. And then, there, per 1,000 gallons additional would be 23 cents. Same thing for IRR1, $12.03 to $14.00, that's $1.97, 21 cents per 1,000 gallons. And the IRR2 and 3 goes from $15.48 to $17.50, another $2 increase, and a $4.57 to $4.85, or 20, that's, what's that, 23, 28 cents per 1,000 gallons for them. Those are a little bit higher paying customers. So, we're still extremely low. We did not raise rates to keep up with our neighbors. We didn't raise rates because we were low either. If we were low and we could keep them low and provide the services that you come expect, we would keep them low. So, that's another thing. We're not raising fees just because we have some distance between us and other municipalities or county that may be providing utilities that are near us. So, that's not why we're doing it. It's not a money grab. It's just to keep up with inflation. Inflation over the last several years has been, you know, anywhere from 5%, 6% up to, by some numbers, 8%, 9%. So, if you look at that cumulatively, you're looking at easily 20% just over the last few years, and these rates are a lot less than a 20% increase. We're not trying to even keep up with inflation. We're trying to keep up with what it takes to provide the service.
Yeah.
I think I've covered all the highlights, council.
Yeah, I think you did a great job. Yeah, so, you know, in Councilboard, I think we've, you know, we all came to consensus looking at the numbers, and one of the things that the public doesn't have, and some may go out and do their due diligence, is to see that this was not just a trite decision. This was thought of. We did bring it up in a work session just to be transparent about what was going on on the business aspects of our customer service and the services that we provide to you. In order to continue to provide the services with labor cost adjustments and inflation, these type of things have to happen, unfortunately. It's not something that we would, if we could get by without doing these adjustments, we would. But unfortunately, running a business or utility business, that's not something that we can do right now. And so, it is what it is at this point. We live here as well. I don't like charging more money for myself. So, this is not something that we look forward to doing. So, but thank you for your understanding. All right, we'll let that, any other, Councilman Boone or Councilman Conyers, you have anything on that? Mayor, you're good. Okay, so, we'll let that lay over. All right, agenda item number seven is a resolution to award bid number 24014 to Taylor Corporation for Water Treatment Plant Number One Improvement Phase One with a bid proposal not to exceed $1,471,500.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution. So, we had a lot of good conversation during the work session on it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. We discussed this agnostium during the work session to have some transparency here. So, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number eight is a resolu-, uh-oh, nope, strike that one, strike nine. Agenda item number 10, a resolution that the city council hereby amends Resolution Number 495023 to add the following. The city utility department may issue available certificates and it may provide sewer services to a subdivision with four or fewer lots or a single family home outside the corporate limits. We discussed this one as well in the work session.
Yeah, Mr. McDowell, did you happen to come up with a little quick, little short phrase to satisfy me wanting to just, I know it may be a duplication, but to say something to the effect, or single-family residences within subdivisions that already have a certificate of availability?
You're doing single-family also, that if somebody's on a line, and I'm not clear on what you wanted with that, single-family lines that are already on a line, that may not even have been issued a-
I think that's included, right?
That's included in the language right now.
Right, yep.
Correct.
Just want to clarify that, you know, if you're a single-family residence in a, say, a large subdivision that already has been issued a certificate of availability, just make it clear that-
You could hook up to-
You can hook up to it.
If we added or-
It is a kind of, it's kind of redundant, but I just wanted to be clear. I don't want anybody to challenge that.
I've got the language.
You got it? Yeah, Lisa says she's got it in the work session.
Or a single-family lot in a subdivision that already has availability certificates.
Okay, so, I want to amend the resolution as it's in our package to append the language to include that. So, I want to make that in a form of a motion.
Yeah, I need a, it's a motion, I need a second on amendment. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further conversation as far as the amendment concerning already existing availability certificates and the connections in those particular areas for single-family homes? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, that motion carries. Now, with that, now we want to make a motion to accept the amended resolution.
Correct.
Oh, we do? Were we amending? I thought I was making a motion to approve the-
Nope, we amended first.
Resolution as amended.
We amended first, now we'll, I need a motion to accept the amended-
Okay, all right, well, I'll move to adopt the amended resolution.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, very good, guys. All right. Agenda number 11, agenda item number 11, as a resolution, the city council approves the selection by Mary Sherri Sullivan for professional engineering services RFQ for the design of a new 16-inch force main and two master wastewater pump stations along the Highway 181 corridor to Kimbley Horner and Associates, Inc., and hereby authorize Mary Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is just for engineering fee for, to selection or engineering. All right, I got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 12, a resolution to award bid number 24018, 2024, to John G. Walton Construction Company, Inc., for County Road 13 resurfacing project with a bid proposal not to exceed $408,297.01. All right, Richard Johnson, our super, our engineer, spoke about this one, resurfacing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 13, a resolution that the city of Fairhope authorizes submission of the RACE Grant Program 2024 for a bridge system to replace a box culvert system over Fly Creek on US Highway 98, Fairhope, Alabama, and authorizes the mayor to sign all request grant applicants, application documents on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just for clarification, Nicole, submitting the grant doesn't obligate us to anything financially at this time.
No. It's a very good point.
I think that we would enter into a partnership with Aldott for the construction of this bridge, and the city wouldn't be out of money.
Yeah, yeah, we're good. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that was the plan. I think we're going up to, what, 20 million on this, Nicole? That's right. Okay, very good. All right, very good. All right, I got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 14 is a resolution that the city council approves and adopts the recommendation of the personnel board for the reclassification of one GSI technician, grade 10, to engineering technician, grade 8. Mr. Johnson spoke on this one.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 15, a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of a new replacement cabinets to Fire Station 1. The total cost not to exceed $69,578.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Got your cabinets, chief. Long overdue. All right, agenda item number 16 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of a backup internet service for C Spire for 36 months for a not-to-exceed amount of $31,500. It's a budgeted item. Mr. Jeff talked about this.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just say it's, just be sure to put it in the 2025, 2026 budget as well, because it's only a third budgeted this year.
Right, okay. I think it was budgeted at $10,500 each time, if I remember correctly. So, all right, no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 17 is a resolution that the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a change order number one, RFQ Professional Engineering Services for an athletic track and additional parking at Founder's Park with a cost of $2,145 with a GeoCon Engineering and Materials Testing, Inc., subcontract of contract with Sawgrass Consulting, LLC. The total project complete cost for the subcontract will be $10,145. Mr. Johnson spoke about this. It was just a miscalculation on the not-to-exceed.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 18 is a resolution to authorize the negotiation of a bid number 24017 with Yamaha Golf Car Company for 70 new electric golf carts for Quail Creek Golf Course purchase or lease options as the only responsive bidder. The direct purchase cost is not to exceed $523,250. Mr. Bobby Hall talked about this.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the resolution. We're getting electric golf carts. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 19 is a resolution to award bid number 24016 to Image Solutions, USA, for flame-resistant uniform shirts, annual contract for the not-to-exceed amount of $45,000 annually. Brother Patterson spoke on this.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution for the award.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? We will make sure that we are environmentally as safe as we can with this product. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 20, it's a resolution to award bid number 24019 to SP Design and Manufacturing, Inc., for employee uniform shirts, annual contract for a not-to-exceed amount of $40,000 annually. It's another budgeted item. These are just our uniforms.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 21 is a resolution to award bid number 2421 to Witherington Construction Corp. for Fairhope Public Library second floor renovation with a bid proposal not to exceed $812,000.
Make a motion, we award the bid to Witherington Construction.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'm glad that this is finally going through. I know Ms. Tamara and the library people are excited about this, so we can move forward. There was a little bit of, a little bit of concern at one point we had to go back and do this, but all is well. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 22 is an appointment for the library board. Mr. Dan Stankowski.
Make a motion, we reappoint Mr. Dan Stankowski to the library board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I want to continue to thank Mr. Stankowski for his community service. He's been doing it for a long time. Yes, sir. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number 20, agenda item number 23, it's an application for a beer wine off-premises license by Rajes Aurora, RHPP Trading LLC, DBA, Deli Depot, food mark, 355 Greeno Road, South Fairhope, Alabama, 36532.
Make a motion, we approve the application.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Deli Depot, I know, that's the gas station. All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, agenda item number 24 is public participation on any matter good of the order. Does not have to be on an agenda item. If you have anything to say, please come up. You have three minutes. Give your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Give your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Okay.
May I ask a stupid question?
Come to the podium, sir. No question is stupid. My third grade teacher told me that.
It's like they're Jimmy Adams at Nine Audubon Place. The term corporate limits and city limits, are they the same thing?
Yes, sir. Synonymous, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to check.
Yes, sir. Roll tide. All right, guys. I'm gonna read this, if I can find it. Agenda item number 25 is an executive session. If I can find the letter, I'll read this letter to you guys. As city attorney, I, Marcus E. McDowell, I hereby request that the city of, the city council go into executive session based on Alabama Code 3625A7A3 to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation controversies not yet being litigated but eminently likely to be litigated, or eminently likely to be litigated if the government body pursue, pursues a proposed course of action. As city attorney, I hereby request that the city council of the city of Fairhope rise from their regular work session meeting on Monday, February the 19th, 2024, to go into executive session. The city council shall be in executive session for approximately 50 minutes.